As you know that the Constitutional Court has directed Parliament... ...or it must change the Electoral Act 73 of 1998. So that it includes individuals or independent candidates to participate on provincial and national elections. So the Constitutional Court did let that act unconstitutional. The Minister of Home Affairs appointed a task team led by former Minister Wale Musa. That task team was to look on the methods or modalities to respond to the Constitutional Court judgment. They've extensively consulted to source input from various sectors stakeholders. And they've arrived on two policy options that they've made recommendation to the executive. The first option is that you must maintain the current electoral system and introduce independent candidates. The second option was to consider the constituency electoral system. The executive then tabled the Electoral Amendment Bill to Parliament. And the Parliament referred that amendment bill to the Portfolio Committee. All those decisions of the task team of Wale Musa and the cabinet recommendation. The Portfolio Committee doesn't have a decision or Parliament. We then issued an invitation for written submission from to invite members of the public to comment on the bill. We can confirm to you that we receive lots of responses for written submission. On the 2nd and 3rd of February 2022. We also receive requests for NGOs to make oral submission to the Portfolio Committee. We're giving this account so that you understand why we are here. In all these stages, the committee does not have a decision yet. We've started our public hearing throughout the country in Limpopo and KwaZulu-Natal. Today we're here in Sosaneké, yesterday we're in Mafiki. It's your meeting to talk to the committee. On how you think this amendment, how individuals or independent candidate can participate in the provincial and national elections. We're going to respect your views which you're going to submit to ourselves. We're also aware that the Public Education Unit of Parliament was here to interface with yourself on the amendment bill. We're going to allocate you five minutes to make submissions to the Portfolio Committee. When you have exceeded or your minutes have elapsed, you must appreciate when we request you to stop. But we are not going to suppress anyone for submitting. We normally start at 10 o'clock and end at half past 12 or 1 o'clock. But you have realized that you have requested yourself so that you start at half past 10. We're going to plead with yourself. That you must respect each and everyone who's going to come to the podium to make his or her own submission. You must respect political parties or NGOs that are going to make their own submissions. Our interest is to listen to you so that we take notes for proper guidance. We nominate 10 hands, you raise your hand, we recognize you, you come to the chest, you make your input when you are done, we go to another set of hands. You can use any language and you must be free. We're now taking this opportunity to invite hands for those that want to contribute to this Electoral Amendment Bill. Number one. Anyone? Okay, number two, let's get to our Jesus.
Don't be afraid.
Number two, number three, number four. Yeah, let's start with this four hands and see how, yes. Yeah, number five. Thank you. Let me also recognize a councillor Tabelo Sedishu. Who is representing the mayor here, maybe if you can bow, I'm not sure. Thanks, we are appreciating your presence, thank you.
People of the Democratic Republic of South Africa. Mozizkotani province. Mamanga Garuta Sekomotimumpati region. Legwatai Manisap region. Members of Parliament, members of legislature. Leaders of council and ordinary poor masses of our people. My name is Molokotlifot Mukwena. I'm an activist in the organization of young people that is recognized by Oliver Thomp, may his soul rest in peace. First of all, let me start by saying that we welcome the bill. And we don't know why Parliament is here with this bill because the instruction has been given from the Court of the Law. And it makes sense, so it means that Parliament should implement. But when we implement, we should also look at the criteria of how do we best have borne obey in our societies. We have got a very serious problem of our society being led by people who are not educated. That's why our rents in relative to other currencies is declining. Because people who are leading us are not educated. And we cannot blame our people, we should blame Parliament. Because when Parliament sits, it speaks about unnecessary things, that's why the court is able to tell Parliament what to do. But Parliament is the one that must tell court, or this is what is must happen. So it means that we have got people in Parliament who are supposed to be on the street. And we've got those who on the street who are supposed to be in Parliament. So it's very important that the issue of education through both whether you you stand as an individual or a political party, there must be a certain qualification. And it must not only be in legislature and in Parliament, it must also come to the ground in council. Because we are being led by people who are not educated. And those people are people that are leading ordinary masses of our people. So if Parliament does not legislate education through this bill, then it means that we are going to come again here in 2040 to come and speak about education while we have got people in Parliament that must speak about that. We want Parliament to come to the people about serious matters, not such matters. We accept the other bill of the expropriation bill. We're saying that that bill must be amended by Parliament. Lent expropriation without compensation must happen. So that people are going to be liberated economically on the ground. I'm from Christian myself, when I was driving past the, I saw many, they are this, Batu Bali Mila mall. Bali Mila sunflower, Bali Mila maffey, La Bali Mila inn. Baba wa banalidi koomu, banalidi inn, banalidi inn. But who are these people?
So just as you are coming along, he says that you have seen a lot of other people who seems to be in good standing. They have got farms, sunflower fields and different other types of, but who are those people?
The question that we are asking to members who are sitting in Parliament. And the majority of those members are members of the African National Congress. When we go to the the policy of the African National Congress, the 54th National Conference, it's clear that we must expropriate land without compensation. Now Parliament is coming to the people to ask the people again. The people have already spoken through the organization that is in charge. Why, what you should be coming to us here as we welcome the somlomo of the province of the revolutionary movement, thank you. We're saying to Parliament that we must be serious when we sit in Parliament, we must speak about serious issues.
Yeah, I can conclude.
Yeah, in conclusion, we welcome you for coming to our people. And we also want to speak about the issue of forced industrial revolution. It must not only exist in Parliament, it must be fashionable on the ground. So that when we speak about education, when we speak about forced industrial revolution, our poor scholars who are poor young people in our society should have access to the fourth industrial revolution, that will be my submission, amanza.
Thank you. Next.
Let me take this opportunity to thank the members. All the leaders. So we have given us the opportunity to come and make submissions as members of the community. Our struggle is only one, we really wish we can be taken note of. So we really need councillors, we need leaders who can be able to look into our needs. Who can actually be able to come into our own homes to come and look into the situation. We've got children who even are street kids, they sleep on the streets. Unfortunately, when we elect some leaders, they are happy to be elected because they are going to eat money from the Parliament. They say that if we do elect them, what they will be able to do is they will be able to give us some help. Even employment is something that they can be able to render help to us about. They were able to come into our houses during the elections and they promised us heaven and earth, beautiful things. But now after voting for them, they no longer even recognize us, they just pass, drive past us with in beautiful cars etc. They don't even recognize our existence. Even those roads on which they are driving, they are full of potholes, the township is full of, it's dark, there are no street lamps, nothing seems to be working. And then when we look at some of the people who are doing some jobs, it's only the very same people all the time. Even when it comes to sanitation or whatever, it's same people all the time. So we really want you to look into the situation in our community, we want it to be developed and to actually better it. And those kids or students who have graduated are just sitting at home doing nothing and nobody cares to care as to what is the way forward from here. There is not even a single leader who is doing anything for the reason that we actually have elected them into the position. So that is my submission which I wanted to put before the Parliament today. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, let us, thanks very much for your comments. Before you can continue. We understand that there are other issues that are related to governance or service delivery. And if you have realized, we did not stop, we did not stop him. Because we are members of Parliament here and elected by yourselves. And the councillors are here. What will us, will request is that. The item of today is on Electoral Amendment Act. On how individuals or independent must participate on provincial and local government elections. If we can spend our input around that. You'll assist the committee and the Parliament to understand to your inputs that you have submitted. We're not saying you must not raise it, but let's focus on this item we're dealing with now. We have officials here, honor, no sorry, Mr. Matonsi. You will take notes for, to that gentleman. So if there's any other matter that is outside of what you are dealing with, we'll request that you you liaise with him, you will liaise with member of the of the committee and councillors. What we're pleading, we're not suppressing you to talk to us, we're saying this Matonsi, he notes issues. All the public hearings, there were areas where we're receiving such comments. And we're noting them so that we take them to various committees in Parliament where they're dealing with the service delivery issues. So I'm I'm building a case so that when you are not within the item, I'll request you to stop and refer you to Matonsi. We're lobbying for that understanding as a member of the committee. Thanks, you can proceed.
Greetings.
Concerning about the Electoral Act 73 of 1998. That I'm of the opinion that it should be amended, it's long overdue. The other concern, as it stands now, we vote for a political party. Then the political party impose a leader and at times leader the hana the credentials. So I can only independent candidates and the criteria is the usual like register as an independent candidate. As we know, well-established political parties banalidi funders. So it's easy for them to register and now I get that as an independent. I can acknowledge it because the amount it be during the Electoral Act, it's too much for but to represent the community. But I would like to give criteria and proceed in the Electoral Act. Now my opinion, and because now if we remove the leader, I must first go through or it must first go through the political party and then the political party. So if it are not a problem, it is straight and direct. And then we can also remain straight and direct.
Thank you, next. Our team were requested to introduce ourselves. Yeah, when they finish, I will request the first gentleman and that want to come back, just introduce their names, you can proceed.
My name is Thomas Mapote. I will go straight to the point related to an independent candidate. I'm struggling with this thought of actually having to have independent candidates elected. When we come to the point of making the decisions. And then maybe this person doesn't qualify? And then he's going to oppress you?
Because there's no one above you. You are able to 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 follow the protocols of the party. And make transparency which the party requires from you. So if you are independent, getting to a point of saying we're going to have some lawmakers within the community. And it's it's too much creating a problem. Where by now, we are having a lot of political parties. Sometimes they are unable to deliver, but they force matters to oppose the ruling party because they want to be there, just to be there. There's no reasons why should we include independent candidate. Because the problem is if this particular person is being voted, where does he contact? Where does he?
So the point is that if this person has not been compliant, who is he going to report to? Because the problem is that we have such like people and perhaps they haven't been living up to the required standards. But they are just been left to continue as if they are still compliant. So that is the problem that we need to deal with, but who do they report to? So this is the point where I would like the Parliament to improve matters related to the independent candidates.
We must not allow politics to be more than the people who are underground. Let us join hands, work together so that we must know if someone is wrong, what must be done? Who is reliable to discipline that particular sector? Because independent, they incorporate corruption.
So this independent candidate thing is just corruption, nothing else.
Thank you, next.
My name is Utusize Gupa. So I welcome our guests from Parliament. And then I also welcome members of our community. In this main point that we are discussing today. This is how I would like to start. Personally, I'm very happy that our Parliament has come with this particular matter. Because now we have the independent candidates. And then we've got members who are coming from within our parties. If you take an independent candidate and the one who's coming from within the party. And then you compare the two. And then you find that an independent one has some proper documents that seems to qualify him, he can be very proud, he's got supporters. And then the one from. And then the other one from within the party has been elected simply because he's been supported by the people who are within that party. But he doesn't have a vision and an interest of working with people. So my main point is. So we give the independent candidates an opportunity. But now on the other hand, we are actually oppressing them. And this person would want to work for the community. But what actually gives him problems is the matter of registering at the IEC. He doesn't have money to be able to register, but he has an ability to work and help the community. So what I'm trying to ask from our parliament is. They must go and look into this matter of registrations. You see, when you work with people. And you have people's best interest in your heart. And then the only problem that you have, you find that is money. For you to be able to serve the people whom you are having their interest in your heart. You fail to be able to serve them because you don't have money. The money, the registration fee is too high. So I want to plead from our parliament. Can they not go back, please? To go and consider this matter, because sometimes you find that you are unemployed, but you are interested in helping the people. And you are not able to register. And on the other hand, you have these people who actually want you as a leader. And you are not able to be their leader simply because of money. So you have been oppressed by other parties. So I'm asking for the parliament to go back to the drawing board, go and discuss the matter of registrations again. Thank you.
Thank you. We are also joined by a member of parliament, Ndeke Keni Morolo. Thanks very much, Honorable Morolo. We're going to invite another set of hands, the ten. We requested that we must note the names of the two. For purpose of recording. Thanks, thanks, Ndeke Temban.
Baron Hanabo.
Bara Hanabo.
Baron, B-A-R-O-N.
Baron, Baron Hanabo.
Yeah, thank you. We're also requested that we must wear our mask when we're in the so that you observe the protocols of. Let's recognize further hands. Number one at the back, number two, number three, number four, number five. Number six, number seven. Who else? There was a hand at the back, I don't know. Okay. Okay, number eight. Can you get number nine, ten? Okay, this will be set second hand, second set of hands. Thank you, you can start. Sorry, let me explain, there are those I think who came late. We allocate you five minutes to make your submission. But you are not going to suppress anyone. When we request you that your time is lapsed, you must appreciate that we have given you extra time. You want to draw your hand there? Yes, you can. Thank you, you can start.
No, thanks very much. My surname is Bangis, my colonial name is Paul. Let me acknowledge the leadership and start by saying, we welcome the Electoral Amendment Bill. Secondly, we support the proportional PR system because it allows representation of women, youth, and other marginalized groups. Thirdly, we also support option one of make as it is contained in the Amendment Bill. Fourthly, I would like to be short like a miniscule. Number four, I think it is my own perspective that the amount of registration must remain the same. Of remain the same with that of the political organization and that of the independent candidates on the basis that will be able to can deal with an opportunistic tendencies of other members who are from the political organization, but want to use the independency as a way to can milk the resources of our state. So I think with that all being said, I think.
Thank you, next.
My name is Deepur Grace Ahmed. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the leadership of the parliament, councillors amongst ourselves and members of the community.
So I would like to say that the Amendment Bill, the bill must be amended because there are some opportunist, the opportunist who actually present themselves to be elected as such and that is actually the problem.
Yeah, the qualification must be.
And of course, the qualifications, their qualifications must be looked into.
Thank you.
Thank you, next.
My name is Nation Selamo. I'm working for Department of Health. One must firstly request or one must firstly appreciate your presence. It will be very wise of our participatory democracy for you, the members of parliament, from time to time to come and visit us based on our problem. Topic of the day. Yes, we, the progressive forces, we do agree with the amendment. Our request should be, there should be a threshold. The reason being, should it be any problem, suppose we elect candidate A, then he give us a problem, then it will be easier for us to petition him. I believe that it will send a clear message to the participatory democracy. I think.
Thank you, next.
Speaking here is Tokoloi Molifeh. I'm also supporting the bill.
Because independent.
Because having an independent candidate is important within the community. You might be liking someone within the party, but that person not been able to deliver. But then if you take him out as an independent candidate, then all of a sudden, he's able to be someone who's able to deliver and works well as an independent candidate. Thank you very much for the parliament's presence within the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, next.
Greetings, honorable members. Thank you very much. Standing and speaking here is Mrs. Selwani. But my name is Kidiboni and the surname is Ndaba. And then I am married in the Mabote family. I live in Ward Two here in Swayzarrenake in the township. When I say I am Selwani, that is translated, when translated means someone who is crying, I always bring submissions and complaints, but I thought today I must bring you this. So this is a mining license which I have had for some nine years. It hasn't been able to be put into use. Because I've been fighting for the land for a very long time and I'll be having something like sixty-four hectares, which I have had for all this period of time. And I am just struggling to put this into use. I don't have money, I need to renew this, but money is not what I possess right now.
Yeah. So we will protect so that we take note of what is raised. We'll talk about to or let our Mr. Matonzi, the issues, the copies, and will liaise with the Committee of Energy and Mining Co-Parliament. I think, Ndeke Morolo, they will respond to you and assist on how. Yes. Next.
No, thanks, Honorable Chair. I'm here to meet with honorable members of the parliament. My name is Ungai, his surname is Metli. Name is Ungai, his surname is Metli. The IPC Convenance, the C in O two, Lucas Tootumisam branch. I think also would like to support the bills presented by the parliament. However, Chairperson would also want to make an emphasis in this scenario that much as political parties are registering and they are paying a particular amount, we equally want to make an emphasis that equally independent candidate must pay the same amount as political parties pay. Necessarily for one reason, Chair, that we have seen what is happening in coalition government. If you do not level the ground for each political parties, including independent candidate, you are going to have a situation where we have flock of independent candidate in government. And our democracy matches the parliament is trying to strengthen it. We have seen that sometimes coalition collapses. So that's what we want to make an emphasis, Chairperson, that the amount must remain equal. Chairperson, because in provincial legislatures or in provincial national assemblies, independent who would wish to contest in that space, normally we are going to see independent candidate who comes from the political parties because of that populism, as they've been leaders of those political parties. So want to say, let's level the ground. Independent candidate must pay the same amount. Also, Chairperson, want to, to the parliament to look onto the issue of the quota. Because it's just unfair for a political party to have a seat with a number of thirty thousand votes. And then you have a small party or an independent candidate having a seat with that lesser number. So that's what we are saying, maybe it's important that the IEC must also look onto the issue of the quota. Maybe improve, maybe increase the number, it must be rather be two percent if they've been using one percent. That's what we want to make as an input, Chairperson, thank you very much.
Thank you, next.
Greetings.
Kenneth Mochaudi.
I am Kenneth Mochauta.
Mochaudi.
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 Mochaudi. Kenneth Mochaudi.
From Lekwateemani.
From Lekwateemani.
Under the NPO. Okay, from Lekwateemani.
From Lekwateemani.
Under the NPO called the Mighty Liberator Youth Information Centre. I welcome the bill. But looking at the non-compliance, section thirty-one, C. Chair, my concern is, if you look at the point, it says, the chief electoral has to issue an alert to a political party or a candidate who is not complying. But then, my problem is, if you go inside the policies of the political parties, there are policies that state something like the political party has to protect its own people. So you find the way that the appointed or the candidate does not comply. But then the political party will be there covering up because it's their own people. I don't know that you get my point. So my question is, why can't the parliament have a legislation that can play along with the community? Or the NGOs or the NPOs? Looking at the interest of the masses, of the people direct apart from the political parties? Because if Oshawa, we tell you, we have a political party, it's under you. But it suffers because of the ruling party.
Sometimes you find that there is no political party in which I'm under, but I am suffering because of a political party.
Okay, the ruling party, it's a, it's submitted to parliament.
So now I may have my documents and then the ruling party takes them and submit them to parliament.
But parliament. But Parliament equal back to political party.
And then Parliament takes them back to the political party?
You find where political party protect about to party.
The political party basically is protecting its own people.
Then Ronaldo masses restata, they're not discouraged towards the government or towards the Parliament.
And then we, as the masses, then we become very discouraged and towards the Parliament or to the political party itself?
Because we on the ground are the ones who are the receiving end of oppression. So, the role we are as than the N P Os?
So I just wanted to know the role of the N P Os?
Correct, some of the role if then the political party or the candidate hardly comply.
As to what role do they play if the N G Os or the political parties are not compliant?
That's number one.
Number one.
Number two.
Just as you said, you will have some liaison taking place with regards to the lady with a mining paper? So we would like you to actually formulate a section like that for us people from the N P Os? Because we feel that there can be some laws to be formulated that can actually allow us entry into the Parliament? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Allow me to start with the greetings. My name is Letlohonolo Matansi.
And if I was to say whether I support the bill or I'm against the bill, I would say I'm against the bill. Le bakalaka, my main reason being, I'm of the view, if you were sent by a political party to the Parliament, there will be only that particular political party that will recall you from the Parliament. Therefore, if you are in the Parliament as an independent candidate, I think you will have a problem if you will have to recall you. So, in closing, because I cannot be long, in closing, I was just saying, I'm against the amendment of this section because I believe.
I'm of the opinion that nominating an island, you can't lead the nation on your own just by yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Allow me to greet the leadership from the Parliament? Including the citizens. My name is Sylvester Pimelo from Naladi, what night? I'm very proud. I accept the bill. I'm in full support of it.
But the issue here, the independent candidate, because if automatically, I have power, before you create the city more originally, then therefore, because of, remember, before you need to serve in the province. Now, if I have a PR council from the region, from the province, I have a independent candidate.
In summary, in short, however, as much as I support the bill, I've got a challenge with this independent participant that if they cannot do better within the local level, how will they be representing us at provincial or higher offices? If they cannot even perform within minimum position here?
Thank you. We're inviting other hands. Number one, two, three, four. Number five. Any other hand? Okay, let's start.
Greetings to the Parliament. Greetings to the public, to the citizens at large. My name is Timelotweu. I'm from the village called Blumov. I'm standing here before you in full support of the bill. Simply because if you can look into issues of registrations. Particularly for the independent candidates. I think it's important to reduce the amount of the registrations for the candidates because that will enable us to participate in massive numbers. I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not saying it's going to be important. It's not important, so to say. Because in fact, that will invite too many numbers of independent candidates. That will now allow us opportunities for the layman's. Let the bill remain as it is. If two thousand is said to be the amount, let it be consistent as it is. I thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Greetings to the leadership. My name is Itumelen Kobe from Ward Five. My worry is the youth here in our community. Especially their behavior and conduct. Most of the time, our youth, they seem to be confused, not know what they should do. Most of them, they've completed their graduations or education, but they are just committed on to drugs because seemingly there's nothing that they can do actually in the community. I suggest or rather request humbly that we look into activities like your sports and recreation to keep them busy because without that, they end up engaging in other illegal or not so good behavior in the community. We also want to be considered. Similarly, nobody pays attention to us. Please recognize us, the leadership. I greet the honourable members of the Parliament. My name is Joyce. My concern is the groupings of the elderly. Because we're struggling a lot as the adults and elderly. Particularly in terms of service delivery, we just asking the Parliament to assist with abortion blocks. I really appreciate your presence today as the Parliament to come and listen to our complaints. Your attention to the elderly is very much important to us. Especially those that are participating within political parties. Please look into our well-being, especially in terms of the sanitation as to are we okay in our living conditions? When we go to the municipality to request our services, they need to pay attention to us, to our requests. They shouldn't give promises and commitments yet. They are not fulfilling their commitments. We are successful now because of Moschalon. But if we were to visit that place, there's actually.
Because she's raising important issues. I'm sure you are aware that the President and his cabinet, they were here in North West last week. And all the issues that you are raising here, even if you didn't attend the inbezo in Mahiking. The issues that you are raising, they were raised in that inbezo, but also affect you who are residents here. So we want to appeal to you that the President and his cabinet and the government of North West. We are sitting here as members of Parliament that have taken those notes and will follow those issues as members of Parliament. So we are requesting that anything that has to do with service delivered, we know that there was inbezo here in North West and just pack those issues and we focus on the electoral amendment bill. All of us here, four of us, Honorable Muralung, Honorable Ross, Honorable Maligwa, were members of Parliament and we worked throughout all areas. So the issues we are raising were noting them, but we are convinced that there was an inbezo in relation to governance and service delivery on the issues that are affecting the people of North West. That's why we want to stop you on the matters relating to service delivery so that we focus on why we are here and we're not suppressing anyone. We're noting these issues and we requested you that, this Mr. Matonsi here, if those related issues are going to request, you sit down, Mr. Matonsi will come to you, take notes, you are contacted, and I promise you that they will interact with yourself. I'm just assisting, so I don't spend time on issues that were dealt sufficiently last week by the President and the cabinet and the government of North West.
We still continue as the elderly that we insist that you pay attention to us as the elderly of the community. But I do understand and I really appreciate the fact that it was attended to as it was just discussed in Mahiking. I will appreciate that whatever that you came here to discuss today, to put it in practice, let it be implemented. There shouldn't be what you already used for, that you just promised and disappeared. Just to promise and never deliver what you promised. Thank you.
No, thanks Mama. Next.
Thank you very much. Greetings to all members. My name is Reginald. My surname is Dintwa. I'm from Blumov in the Lequatemani Subregion. I am the Chairperson of Bitumelen Youth Council, which is a council of young people, a representative and a stakeholder in the municipality. I accept the bill as it is. We welcome it. However, we are not guaranteed that just as much as political parties have been failing to produce credible leaders, we don't have any guarantee that independent candidates are also going to be as productive as we'd like them to be. Now, my suggestion is going to be this. Maybe we should look into how we select and accept the candidates that come forth. For example, we should look at their historical activism within the black community. Also, we should look at how, we should look at their superior intellect. And then, there's a system that they use in China. They call it the meritocracy. Now, there's a system that they only look at your productivity as a person, as an individual, what you've done and what you can do as a person for the people that you want to lead. So now, my mind was just that we should look at, maybe, look at how we select those people and accept them as prospectives of who, of the people that want to lead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Greetings. Good morning. Here speaking is Opa from Milton. My point today is that, yes, I do agree that wherever that should be representing us should be a person with some educational background. Yes, I agree on that point. Of course, allow the community to be the one nominating the preferred candidate that will be the one effective to represent their interests as the community. It's a fact that when the community elect their preferred candidate, there should be somebody that is living within the community, that they can have confidence on that person to represent their interests. I will just stop there in short.
Thank you. We're now inviting other hands, further hands. Number two. Number three. Only have three hands. Okay.
I would like to send my sincere gratitude to the cabinet for coming today. My name is Sokolo Moremi. Here in Swayzareneke, Ward Eight. My concern is the council that is here around Northwest. I'm more worried about the sports activities, particularly the soccer fields. Unfortunately, our kids or ourselves as youth, we only see this fancy sports activities on TV, but they don't really exist within our community. This includes our schools, especially here in our area. The projects do start, but they never complete the structures of our schools. Similarly, our municipalities only focusing on job opportunities. It seems like they're taking a blank eye on issues relating to sports activities. We also want some recognitions on that issue of sports and recreation. I thank you.
Next.
Thank you, Chairperson, for this opportunity. I also want to thank further your cabinet. Including the massive number of people that are supporting this session today. My name is Sepole Karre Chiko. I'm from the same village here in Pilighe. I'm proud and standing here in support of the bill today. However, I have my own complaints and suspicions as well. I'm one of those that graduated back in time, um, I'm part of those that just completed their grade twelves. I've...
Okay, okay. Let's, let's hold it there. We'll request Mr. Matonsi to take your notes. Yes. Mr. Matonsi, you will take, you will take your notes. Yes, thank you. Next.
Greetings. My name is Nomza Tauniana from Wat Two.
I am the ANC member.
I'm an ANC member, she said.
Uh, I support the bill. Uh, all, all the political parties and all the independents must be treated the same. They must all meet the same requirements. And all those who fake or make frauds or pay for the votes, they must, the action must be taken to all of them and they must be removed.
Okay, let's just refresh for, for the last time, so that at least we, we get a sense of this platform. We said earlier on when we opened the meeting and we did a, a brief summary, that there was an NGO that took the president and parliament to court, to constitutional court. Because of the Electoral Act seventy-three of nineteen ninety-eight, the contest or the argument was that that act is unconstitutional because it does not allow individuals to participate in the election of the, to be elected to be provincial legislature and national assembly, which we call provincial and national elections period. So there was a task team appointed by the Minister of Home Affairs to look on how the independents or yourself as individual, you can participate in the provincial and national elections. Because as the state has called, it's only political parties that are participating in the provincial and national elections. So the committee and the parliament are directed to correct hence this amendment bill that we are submitting to you, members, to guide how these individuals or any person to participate in this provincial and national elections. So ourselves are here to listen to your views and we, we, we just want to do this refresh, so that you understand why we are here. It's important for you to interact with the committee on this electoral amendment bill. You know that in local government elections, you have independents, candidates, that they are participating. So this process seeks to request members of the publics, public, political parties, NGOs and all sectors to guide parliament on how must we include or deal with this electoral process. So I thought we must just refresh for those that came late, so that we are on one, eh, page. Can we invite hands? We're not forcing you to, we're encouraging you to contribute, but if there's no any other contributions. Further hands? Number one, there with the SA. Any other hands?
Greetings to all. I'm Laris Masia, the Regional Secretary of Sasco in Dr. Rup's Romo Tama Bat. I do suppose, I do support the bill of implementing or introducing independent candidate. But my question is, if we, if we are going to have independent candidate, where are they going to account? Because independent candidate, they will be independent and they will work impartial. Uh, I just want clarity on, on that. If you are independent, you elected directly to, to parliament, but at later stage you misbehave, where are you going to account? I like in, if you are coming from political parties, we know there will be a disciplinary that you are coming from each political party. So, and the, the other question that I would like to ask, because the bill, it, it is saying here in introduction at the page sixteen, eh, one point two, where it says the Constitution Court directed parliament to rectify the impeachment section of the act within a period of twenty-four months from the date of the judgment, which twenty-four months is to be calculated from June twenty-twenty-two to June twenty-twenty-two. Uh, does that mean that from that date is given, anyone now can now participate or fully want to join to become independent, participate in parliament? Uh, thank you for clarity. I will just think clarity on, on that. Thank you very much.
Any other hand? That's your name, my brother? Laris? Laris who? Masia, Masia. Laris Masia? Any other hand? Okay. Can I check two issues? Just two people, if they understand why we are here. Or if there's a concern on this process, just two people only.
So don't be afraid, please.
Just come to the podium.
Uh, thank you once again, Chairperson. My name is Molokotlifod Mukwenagin. Like I said earlier when I spoke in that, when parliament comes to the people, it should come to the people with issues affecting the people.
So now we understand, eh, that people have come here to talk about the subjects related to the fact that eh, the constitution had not given an opportunity in the past for independent candidates to run. When someone wanted to, eh, contest for the elections in the national assembly and in the legis, provincial legislature, he would have to actually go through the political party. Now the Constitutional Court has taken a decision and asked the parliament to relook into this law and actually amend it. So basically following the, 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 the instruction from the Court of Law. So our people have come here to express themselves, to speak to the parliament, but every time when they rise, eh, they actually raise issues and their problems because there is a huge gap between the parliament and members of the society. So that is why I was saying that when people are to elect those who represent them in the parliament, they must actually do so following the processes as to how are the things going to be done. So people have lost interest in talking about independent candidates and they are being elected through national party, legislature, etc. What we want to say is that when the parliament comes to the people, please come and speak to the people about, eh, service-related issues.
Okay, thank you. Eh, thank you, thank you, mister. Is there any other person who want to comment on the electoral amendment bill? On the service delivery issues, on the our laws on that matter, we're not going to allow it. We now understand where you are and how we are dealing with this matter. Can I check if there's any other person who want to comment on electoral amendment bills, so that we close the meeting? Number one? Number two? Number three, show your hand, my brother? Show, number three? You can join the, the team here. Any other hand? We are going to work towards closing if there's no any other input to be submitted in relation to the electoral amendment bill. Is our understanding that this is our last hands? Number four? Okay, number four, you can join, eh...
Okay, eh, what would number four, but, but you don't add that, I'm a high school.
Okay, is this our understanding that this is our last hands?
So, hello, honey, I'm a, I'm a fellow, I'm a, I'm a fellow, I'm a fellow, I'm a fellow, I'm a.
Is your meeting, is the understanding that this is our last hands?
So, copy, I'm a low, I'm a high school, eh, I'm a, I'm a fellow, ah, I'm a good bang.
Okay, here you can proceed.
All right, uh, all right. Thank you, Chairperson of the session. Thank you to the Parliamentary Committee for reaching out to the people. It is very impressive to see that we've got a government that is caring. My name is Calvin, but it's a, it's a, it's a zombie. I am from Blumhoff. Uh, on this bill, I think it is not a matter of discussing whether or not it should be amended. It is a constitutional issue. It is keeping with a Constitutional Court judgment. The only thing that is important is that we should put emphasis on regulating the participation of independent candidates. In that it cannot be correct that any person can wake up one day and decide to say, I want to contest to be the premier as an independent candidate, or I want to contest to be a president as an independent candidate. I think two things are very critical. One must be that we want people who are credible. People are complaining about service delivery issues, and it is only people who are credible who can deliver such service delivery issues. And it is people who are connected to the people. So I think that what Parliament should do, or what the bill should then seek to, to emphasize, is that we want people who enjoy the support of the people. And I think that we should maybe have a minimum number of people who are supporting a person across the province, or across the country, in the, in the, in the case where a person wants to contest to be a president. There should be a threshold to say, one should present a minimum number of signatories who pledge to say, we agree with this person. And my suggestion is that it should be fifteen thousand for a province. For a person to say, I want to contest to be the premier as an independent, you must bring us fifteen thousand signatories who are saying, and from across the province, not only from the area where the person lives. But the, the, the support should be widespread so that we can, we, we can be sure that this person understands the challenges of every section of our province. And in the case of a person wanting to contest to be president, they should present ten thousand signatures per province for at least five provinces. A minimum of five provinces bringing ten thousand signatures, that should qualify a person. Otherwise, we will have a situation where we have a ballot paper or a vote, a ballot paper that has more than twenty thousand names, because everybody wants to contest. So we should limit by, 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 by having a threshold on support for a person who wants to contest. That is one. And number two, there should not be special treatment or favorable treatment for people just because they are independent candidates. The same rules that apply to political parties must apply to independent candidates. And that speaks in terms of, uh, your, your, your registration fees with the I E C and all other things. The same registration that is paid by political parties, independent candidates must be in a position to pay the same. It can be different in the case of independent candidates. Thank you.
Next. Next.
Do my lamba, I'm a high school. Uh, Lina, I'm a gift, they were, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a local African National Congress.
Greetings. I am Deboho Aimos, and I am a member of the African National Congress.
Uh, get, they were, I'm a, I'm a.
Eh, they were, I'm a, I'm a. Uh, I would like to say that I support the bill because it gives effect to the constitutional judgment. It also gives effect to the political rights and gives effect to the rights of individuals to be able to contest for election at the national and provincial sphere without subscribing to a political party or partisan structures. But I would like to say that even if I support the bill, I support it with conditions. The first condition is that the independent candidate must pay a, a reasonable amount in order to contest the election at the national and provincial sphere. Secondly, they must meet certain number of prospective voters. There must be a petition in which those independent candidates must meet, because we will have a nightmare where everyone and anyone will want to contest elections, and our ballot papers will be lengthy, and there will be a logistical nightmare for the I E C. I would also like to say that the independent candidate and political parties, there must be on separate ballot. There must be a ballot paper for independent candidates, and there must be a ballot paper for political parties, so that we can shorten the ballot paper, so that our illiterate, our illiterate voters can be able to express their right to vote easily. Firstly, I would like, eh, eh, thirdly, I would like to say that, eh, although, although the independent candidate must be, must be allowed to contest election, they must meet a certain threshold, because we have a situation in our country where the A N C can make a seat in Parliament, can be a forty thousand. But for smaller parties and maybe independent candidate, they can only meet a minimum number, but they, they can be, eh, eh, they can gain a seat in Parliament. So I would like to say that as much as the A N C, there should be a threshold applicable to the A N C and other bigger, bigger political parties. That threshold must also apply to the smaller parties and independent candidate. I would also like to raise the question about where will this independent candidate account to? Because in political parties, you have a situation where a member who commits a misconduct will go through the processes of his party, and the party will be able to remove him. But in the context where we have a novel culture, where we introduce an independent candidate, I believe that there should be a, a body that will regulate independent candidates who commit misconduct. That body, if a person maybe commits a misconduct, that body will be able to listen to him, that person will make presentation before that body, and that body will make a determination whether that independent candidate will be removed or will not be removed. Or we will have a situation where, where the impunity culture flourishes in terms, in terms of the independent candidates. So we need to curtail that culture by making a structure that will specifically deal with the misconduct or mishaps of the independent candidate. So I would also like to say that those who manipulate the processes, those who buy votes, whether independent or they are from political parties, they must also be dealt with accordingly. They must be removed, eh, they must also be removed from, 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 from being eligible to contest election. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you very much, once again, um, on the podium. Uh, we do support the bill, but we need to check first if the bill is going to work for the youth. Eh, I was suggesting, because this is the bill, we need to engage on it. I was suggesting that for, for this bill, for either to listen or to support.
Can we check? You, you are repeating?
Yes.
And you've been captured?
Indeed.
Yes. Can, can you allow others to, to, to input?
Okay.
Yeah.
Very clear.
I get seen up, eh, uh, who live, uh, the, who live, uh, Parliament, I don't know, I'm not, 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 I'm
Let me take this opportunity to thank our Parliament for having been able to come into the community, to come and listen to their submissions.
Uh, we, uh, we support that, 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 that. Honey, yeah, for, for me, do we, Mola, wanna, oh?
We wholeheartedly support this matter of amending, eh, the law, the bill.
I believe that it's, that, that's, it's, 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 sadly, quite, oh, 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 it's, 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 the service delivery, it's, 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 it's.
And we are looking very strictly at different types of challenges that we are facing in rural areas and other areas that are related to the service deliveries.
Repeat, I like, Tata, my, I don't, for, I don't, 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 I don't.
And then we have come to realize that there are some internal fights within political parties which are actually creating a backlogs when, when it comes to service deliveries.
I'm not, 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 me can, I, I, for, I'm, uh, wait, the, 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 or, Mole, I'm, 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 me, I, 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 there are some people who naturally don't have a gift to be leaders, eh, but they are
being liked by some of their fellow, eh, party members, and they want them to be leaders. And all of these things create a lot of internal fights, which creates, as I said again, backlogs when it comes to, eh, service deliveries.
I don't know, I'm a, 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 I'm a.
And then when we look very closely into our political parties, we find that yesterday, eh, there are a lot of internal fights that even affected the councillors, and this actually affects very negatively service deliveries.
So, 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 Mollao, oh, I'm, oh, no, I'm, 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 me, I don't, 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 it's, I, 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 I'm, 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 so we have to take note of the fact that when someone is an independent candidate
and who does not subscribe to one of the political parties, this is something that can bring about a improvements when it comes to the challenges that are being faced by different members of the community. So we, something that has to be taken into consideration alongs, along those lines.
Every year, our government is popping out money to ensure that service delivery, it's like, I'm, 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 I'm,
So we see a lot of money being popped up for service deliveries, but now there is no change taking place in the communities. Now we wonder as to what exactly is the problem that causes all of these things? Are these political fights, what is it?
So, 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 but, 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 but,
so we have to make sure that we focus on our problems, and once we have them clear in focus, then we have to look in those who have been elected. Have these people been elected by the members of the society, of the community, or by the political party?
So, 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 for a political party, I, 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 so we would like to have some meetings held, maybe by a political party, before that particular
party comes with, to the people to discuss one of their members who might be opted for a leader.
So, so, I, 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 I,
sometimes.
I, 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 I,
so this is something that happened in the recent local elections. You find that maybe there is someone who can stand as an indep, as an independent candidate, but from within the party, they will start to search and look as to who seems to qualify. Now, all of a sudden, most of often, or most of the time, you'll find that someone who will be opted will be someone from within, eh, the party, maybe someone who is occupying some high station among them there. Whereas, the very person who is outside, who could actually stand as an indec, independent candidate, is the one whom people want. But now he's going to fail, he will never be opted as a, to, to, to run as an indec, independent candidate, because everybody within the party wants the one whom they have actually identified.
Yeah, I'm, 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 Parliament, I don't know, Mola, wanna, oh, oh, he did.
So now I would like to say that the Parliament must pass this bill.
For, I, 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 I,
so that those who are entering into political, who, who are. So that for, for those who are running for these elections must actually go and prepare themselves for this.
For, 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 I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I so that particularly in the northwest province.
So that they can be able to make sure that service deliveries is actually given to the people. So, 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 so,
I, 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 I,
so now we'll be very glad if those who are running for and contesting for these elections, they must come back to the community, speak to them, and actually get to hear what is their needs, what are their needs?
Yeah, I'm a.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Your name, my brother?
Eh, Lina, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a. A gift, but it's a, eh, 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 eh.
No, gift, but it's a, eh.
But it's a, yes.
Gift, but it's a, eh. Thank you. You can proceed.